I'd like to call this meeting to order and welcome everyone this evening to the November 18th, 2013 meeting of the Williamson County Board of Education. Before we get started, I'd like to ask for everyone to please silence or turn off your cellphone. I'd like to thank Officer Dominic Calvani for being here this evening to provide our security. We appreciate your presence. And Board members, if you would please register your attendance this time. We have 11 Board members present. Mr. Gregory is absent. First item on the agenda is the pledge. If you would please stand and join Board Member Mr. Wimberly for the pledge and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Hullett.
Second.
Second from Mr. Welch. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. As part of that approval of the agenda, the Board approved on the consent, the October 21st, 2013 Board Meeting Minutes. We approved the field trip fee request and an Energy Efficient Schools Initiative, EESI, Council's grant for reimbursement on various energy-related projects. The next item on the agenda is public comment. We have seven individuals that have signed up to address the Board this evening. When I call your name, if you would please step to the podium and give us your name and your address. Mr. Anderson, who sits to my right, is our timekeeper. You have a minute and a half to address the Board. When you hear the timer, if you conclude your comments and take your seat. First individual is Daniela Kuntz.
I'm Daniela Kuntz, and I live at 132 Cavalry Drive, Franklin, Tennessee 37064. School Board Members and Superintendent Dr. Looney, one of your Board work sessions caused you to miss out on a recent community event related to students' lives, and I am here to fill you in on what you missed as best as I can do in 90 seconds. The event was both a talk by Dr. Carolyn Murnix, Associate Director for the Vanderbilt Kennedy Center for Research on Education and Human Development, and a screening of an award-winning documentary about the dangers that unseen chemicals pose for all of us, and especially so for our children, and what we can do to reduce harmful exposures to them in our homes and schools. The event sold out, but it would have been so much better if you could have been there too, since you are the community leaders that determine how chemically safe our students' learning environment will be. We will plan more such educative events, which you will hopefully be able to attend. For now, I can only pass on to you a copy of Dr. Murnix's presented speech at our event. But I will soon also pass on to Dr. Looney his requested resource inputs regarding tools for schools for indoor air quality of EPA, integrated pest management EPA programs for schools, and green cleaning programs for schools via Healthy Schools Network, and other important contacts. Thank you very much, and have a blessed Thanksgiving. I'm looking forward to another year of working with you to bring more positive changes for a safer learning environment for all of our students. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Next is Ally Finney.
Hi, I'm short. I'm Ally Finney. I live at 503 Ardmore Place in Franklin, Tennessee 37064. My name is Ally Finney. I'm the PTO President at Perry Creek Elementary in Franklin. Thank you for allowing me to speak for a moment regarding the PTO-funded technology teacher position at Perry Creek Elementary School. Over the last decade, and especially looking into the future, technology is such an important part of students' lives and learning. Parent volunteers and classroom teachers have tried to support our students' technology education since our school opened in 2010. Unfortunately, we learned that lack of time and consistency didn't fulfill the tech curriculum needs of our student body. The county decision to move from TCAP to the Computer-Based Park Standardized Test was the tipping point that our school needed to realize that it was time to hire a professional devoted to our students' technology education. We knew that many other Williamson County Schools PTOs fund part-time tech teachers, so following their model, we raised the funds needed for this position. Many parents in our schools and surely throughout the county would argue that technology teachers should be paid through county funds, not parent donations. As technology continues to be more and more important to our children's educations, perhaps someday tech teachers could be county-fended again. I think they were before. Until then, please allow us to help our students benefit from a devoted technology teacher. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Meredith Blount. I live at 2711 Adobe Hills Place, Thompson Station. Tonight I come to you in to a proposal to not rezone Cameron Farms and instead consider rezoning Crown Point and Wingate Estates for Heritage Middle School for the following reasons. Half of Crown Point is already zoned for Heritage Middle, and there are currently 41 students attending Spring Station now. Wingate Estates has 129 students zoned for Spring Station. Add those two together, and you have over 170 more students, which is more than half of what you're undercapacitated at Heritage Middle. Both are closer to Heritage Middle than Spring Station on the west side of town. On the other hand, Cameron Farms has 76 zoned for Spring Station. We are closer to Spring Station and Summit than both Heritage and Independence. We are 2.2 miles from Summit, I mean from Spring Station, and only 1.2 miles from Summit. If we had sidewalks off Buckner, our kids could walk to Summit School. We can see the school from our subdivision. There are two new growing subdivisions on the north side of town, Canterbury with 147 homes and Bridgemore with 81. Both still have land left to build on. Cameron Farms residents have driven 6.3 miles through winding roads to Bethesda for the past 10 years. We are now finally close enough to our kids' schools, and now you want us to move away farther. Please let us stay at Spring Station and Summit High School, and please continue to let us have bus service to these schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Teresa Mappin.
Good evening. My name is Teresa Mappin, and I live at 2749 Douglas Lane, Thompson Station, and that is in Cameron Farms. And tonight, our goal is that you would reconsider the zoning proposal and consider the alternative proposals that we're presenting. If you will look, it's coming around to you. There is a map one that reflects the proposal by my friend Ms. Blount, as she pointed out, the rezoning. And if you look at that map, if you rezoned Crown Point and Wingate, you would see the line is drawn down behind Cherry Grove, all the way down to Hurt Road, and down to Duplex. And this is what Ms. Blount was proposing, and then rezone us back into Summit High School. Some other options that we have, if you look at the second map, and there's a third page of your handout also, it's going over everything that I'm saying here, so if you need to go back and review it. But there's also options, if you look at rezoning areas north of Thompson Station Road, all the way to Lewisburg Pike, and then north of Bethesda Road. The distance for this proposal is about a mile more or less, the difference that those children are already being bused to Summit High School. One of them is one mile less for them to go to Independence and one mile more for them to go to Independence. And that's outlined on your third page, those distances. Whereas our distance to Independence is 5.3 miles, and Cameron Farm distance to Summit is 1.3 miles. Thank you so much for your time tonight, and please keep us Cameron Farms zoned for Spring Station and Summit. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mike Bellini.
Good evening. I'm Mike Bellini. I also live in Cameron Farms and have a question, something for you to ponder regarding the current proposal to rezone Cameron Farms. Are you sure that this is the best solution for the children of these schools in the community? If you are not sure that it's the best solution for the children, you're obligated to vote against it. And I'm not talking about the best solution for the schools, or the best solution for the communities involved, or even the best solution for the parents, like myself, but for the children. And do you have all the information you need in order to make an informed decision? What we've learned over the past couple of weeks is that you do not. Two weeks ago, at a meeting, a PTO meeting in Spring Station, Dr. Looney mentioned that several of you told him that the residents of Cameron Farms wanted a Bethesda to Heritage to Independence track, to which all of the parents who were there in attendance stood up and screamed, "No." So obviously, that was incorrect. Last week, at Bethesda, when my wife mentioned that the main entrance to Cameron Farms subdivision is on Buckner Lane, apparently that was news to all of you, including you, Dr. Looney, who made the proposal. That's a bit of a key piece of information to where we can see the schools from the main entrance of our subdivision on Buckner Lane. So I would submit to you that you do not have all of the information you need to know that this is the best solution for the children, and I would ask you to consider that. Thank you.
Mr. Bellini, for the record, could you please?
I'm sorry?
For the record, could you?
I'm not sure.
Could you please step to the microphone and state your address?
2700 Adobe Hills Place in Thompson Station.
Thank you. Next is Linda Anderson.
Good evening. Thank you for listening to our voices tonight. First of all, we are all on the same team. Our priority goal here is the education of our children. Nobody can deny that. My daughter, Courtney Blalock, is a student at Brentwood Middle School. We are proud of Brentwood Schools. I live in Brentwood. We know these are county schools. I hope you all got my letter tonight that I sent, the email. My concerns are educational values in children. We look at numbers, and as I entitled my letter to you all, numbers matter. Numbers make a difference. When we look at the schools, and in particular, I'm looking between Brentwood High School and Franklin, that's where my daughter will be rezoned to, those numbers are not equal schools. When you look at, we know Brentwood, that we know Winston County, we're the top schools in the state, I mean, the Tennessee. Nationally, we still have room to go, and we're proud that we're striving to get there. When you do look at these schools, when you look at Brentwood High School, for example, on the national rank is 227, and Franklin is 1,012. When you look at the college readiness, Brentwood is 58.5, and Franklin is 32.6. When you look at ACT scores, when you look at value, when you look at achievement, those numbers are not equal. This move will be taking children from a higher achieving school to a lesser achieving school. Tell me and explain to me how that is going to benefit my child. Your responsibility is to provide the best educational opportunities to these children, and this vote will impact that. Also, the numbers on how you calculated the Lipscomb overpopulation, you know, I would like for those to be revealed. What formulas were used? How was it calculated? I appreciate the work you all do. I understand the challenges we face in our school. We are proud of our school. We are proud of our teachers. We are proud of everybody that works on it. But again, your core values, your number-one priority is the education of these children, and to provide them the best opportunity. And this move is going to take away that opportunity. I ask you to hear my voice, to hear the voice of the parents, see my child, see the children, that this will be taking their educational achievement value and diminish it from these two particular schools. We know the Brentwood Schools are really good. We're proud of them. We know when people go to the Brentwood Schools from out of zone, they don't leave. And we know the reason why, because the Brentwood Schools achieve. They achieve higher than the other schools. We know that. The numbers are plain to see. And if you've looked at the value numbers, if you looked at all the numbers that came out, you could see that. Numbers do make a difference. You know, numbers can make a big difference in winning or losing. Numbers can make a difference into advancing or not advancing. And we ask you to, you know, vote no on this.
Ms. Anderson, for the record, could you please state your address?
520 Brentwood Point, Brentwood, Tennessee. Linda Anderson Blalock, and I am Courtney's mom.
Thank you.
My name's Wally Inman. I live at 2817 Eric Roy Drive, Thompson Station, 37179 Cameron Farms. I also am addressing the rezoning issue. And instead of looking at just the numbers, I would ask you to think about the cost to these kids. Sixth graders that are going to be transferred have been with their friends for seven years. They've grown up with them. They've got good friends. They've got close friends. They've got relationships with their teachers. I have a son that's in ninth grade in Summit. At the PTO meeting at Spring Station, Dr. Looney showed the numbers indicating that Summit is not full and will not be full for a number of years. There's no reason to move them. I think you need to consider the cost, both emotionally and psychologically, these kids to, in my opinion, it's kind of a form of discrimination, saying, "Sorry, kid, you live on the wrong side of the road. You've got to lose all your friends, all your relationships, and go to another school alone." That's not right. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment for this evening. The next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board Members. As we discussed in the work session, we have received the State Report Card. The district received all As in both achievement and in growth. Most importantly, as we've discussed, we have reached a settlement agreement with the state of Tennessee as it relates to the lawsuit that you authorized me to enter into. Mr. Golden has a letter that you have access to and been provided. Just wanted to make the public comment that, from my perspective and from the perspective of your legal counsel, we have settled the matter with the state of Tennessee to our satisfaction. The highlights are that the state has agreed to establish a committee to make sure that this error does not happen again. Secondly, the state acknowledges that there was, in fact, a problem, and if we had been given the opportunity to correct the problem, then our status would have changed. At the end of the day, I feel very comfortable, given that the state has made an express commitment to make sure that this never happens to another Tennessee school district moving forward. And as a result of that, I think it's a win for Williamson County Schools, for the school districts across the state of Tennessee, and the boys and girls that we have the privilege of serving. Be glad to answer any questions. If you don't have any, then we'll bring Ms. Carol Birdsong forward to recognize some very special people.
Thank you, Dr. Looney. Board Members, we have students to celebrate in academics, the arts, and athletics tonight. We are going to start with... Mr. McNeese? We are going to start with Ethan Douglas. Let me tell you about Ethan. Ethan is now a student at Brentwood Middle School, but Ethan started out at Edmondson Elementary School. So this award that we are honoring Ethan for actually began when he was a fourth grader back at Edmondson. He created a comic book character that was chosen to be featured by an artist at the Comic and Fantasy Convention. I believe the character's name is Captain Currency, but don't quote me on that. His teacher, his art teacher at Edmondson is/was Beth Purthell. Now, E-Tales. These are the winners of the 2013 E-Tales Contest at the middle school level. Again, we have two students who were at Brentwood Middle School. They're now at Brentwood High School. They were eighth graders last year, Tomas Starr and Jackson Rector, and they won first place in E-Tales for the middle school division at the Tennessee Educational Technology Association host that competition. Let's talk about athletics now. Brentwood High School won the TSSAA Boys Cross Country State Championship yet again. This is the third consecutive state title for the boys team. Team members are Alec Thomas, Taylor Caldwell, Coleman Chirdrich, Welkis Fazili, Erin Thomas, Francois Laurens, Ryan Lee, Ryan Dennison, Taylor Vroom, and Rayanne Bashir. Derek Yule is their coach. And the girls didn't fare so badly. The volleyball team brought home its ninth state championship by defeating, actually, Ravenwood. Team members are Piper Cleveland, Kelly Severino, Hunter Thompson, Sarah Tuttle, Samantha Cotton, Julia Dickinson, Katie Kemp, Jenny Roy, Ashley West, Kayla Massey, Lil Schwartz, Anna Wilson, Georgia Cotton, Finley Black, Megan Jancy, Keely Kaufman, Kelly Mathis, Kayla Rollock, and Olivia Riles. And their head coach is Barbara Campbell. Assistant coaches, Teresa Ashcraft and Angie Noble, and their managers, Cole McKechnie and Joseph Schuster. Congratulations to those ladies. Today, Dr. Looney was there, and we had a terrific celebration at Independence High School. Ms. Lizzie Kroger not only has been named the state female Wendy's High School Heisman winner, but today it was announced that she is a finalist for the national honor, one of 12 across the nation. What an honor, and you all may remember, several years ago, her sister actually won the award. So quite an honor for that family. Lizzie runs cross-country, and her coach is Molly Haig. And we're going to honor a staff member tonight as well. Dr. Charles Farmer at Summit High School was named the TSSAA Regional Principal of the Year. Congratulations to all of our students and staff members.
I'm sorry. Go ahead. Well, Dr. Looney, would it be appropriate to make a formal motion from the Board to accept the letter?
Yes, sir. I think it would be very appropriate.
Okay. Then I'd like to make that motion that we formally accept the letter from the Department of Education and are able to move on from there.
We have a motion from Mr. Welch to accept the letter from the State Department of Education and the second from Mr. Mesra. Is there any discussion?
Well, I would like to make a comment first, if I may.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Well, first of all, I would like to thank Dr. Looney and the staff for negotiating this, bringing this to a resolution. We, of course, gave you the ability to take this all the way to a lawsuit if needed. And I think even though we didn't get everything that we're looking for, I think it's a good compromise and certainly saves quite a few staff hours, and we can devote those to things that are a little bit more important. Most importantly, we did get the state to admit, or rather, the Department of Education to admit it's wrongdoing, or at least its legalese version of admitting wrongdoing that way. But I feel compelled to sort of at least state at least once for the record the absolute absurdity of this situation. Here we are as a district the highest achieving in TCAP scores, in ACT scores, all As in the State Report Card of both academic achievement and academic growth, and here we are in a situation arguing with the state of whether we're an intermediate school district or a needs improvement school district. I, you know, this from a Department of Education that is finally revealing 2012 data in mid-November for Department of Education Report Cards. It's, I kind of feel like, you know, we've got Vince Young here criticizing Peyton Manning on his performance, and perhaps if there's an actual Tennessean in the Department of Education, they can explain that joke to Mr. Huffman later on. So, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wimberly?
Actually, I was probably going to say about what Mr. Welch said, although not quite as colorfully, so thank you for that. I did want to say this, though. I'm real impressed that you folks have come up with this agreement. And I want to call out Jason. I tend to enjoy making lawyer jokes at Jason's expense, but Jason, you did an exceptional job on this, and I really appreciate it. And did you hear the one about... Never mind.
Usually, the punchline of any good lawyer joke is, "It's a good start," if you're familiar with some of those. Actually, I did want to say, Bill Squire's actually initiated this, and he's actually not here with us at the moment, so I wanted to make sure you were aware of that.
Well, I like to make jokes at his expense, too, so thank you, Bill.
Thank you. Do you have this on the machine for us to vote? Do we want to do so by an oral vote? Is that agreeable? Anybody else wish just to speak? Okay. If you're in favor of accepting this motion, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I see none, so the motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the Board Chairman's Report. As Ms. Birdsong has indicated, we had some very successful first-place teams across our district, but we had a lot of success for all of our teams. So I want to congratulate our fall sports teams, as well as our marching bands. They all had outstanding seasons this year. I wish the very best to Independence High School and Fairview High School football teams who are continuing their journey to the TSSAA Blue Cross Bowl, so we wish them the very best. I'd like to congratulate the Franklin High School Band on winning the Contest of Champions for the second year in a row, and who placed 15th this weekend in the nation at the Band of America's Grand National Championships. Also, a thank you and congratulations to our students, teachers, and staff, and parents for our outstanding report card. I think we have an incredible, exceptional team, and also to Dr. Looney and to this Board for your leadership in the district. I think we have an awesome team here, and it takes all of us to work together to make this happen, so thank you to everyone for that. Thank you to Mr. Wimberly and the Education, Williamson County Education Foundation, and our incredible Williamson County High School student leaders and volunteers for a great Ladders to Hope Celebration. The evening was a huge success, and I'd like to thank Mr. Wimberly for his service as an interim director or chair of that foundation board.
My pleasure.
And I'd also like to thank the staff members who have worked very tirelessly for the zoning proposals that are for consideration before this Board this evening. I know that they have worked very hard to provide us with information to consider as we move forward as a Board on those proposals. But I'd also like to thank the parents and the community members. Many of you stood here tonight and addressed the Board. You've communicated to us in emails. You've also talked, spoke with us at community meetings about this, and I want to thank you for your professionalism and your thoughtful considerations that you've given to the Board to ask questions on your behalf and make sure that we have good information moving forward. So I want to thank you on behalf of the Board for doing that. We greatly appreciate it. That concludes my report for this evening. We'll move on to the next item of business, which is Item 3A under New Business. It's Board Policy Revisions for First Reading. The information is on Page 65, Board Policy 1403, Board Meeting Agendas. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board Members. The changes that are recommended are highlighted in blue. I do recommend approval of these changes. This is the first reading, so this will become, come before this body one more time. This is the first reading, so this will become, come before this body one more time.
Motion for Ms. Mills. Second for Mr. Peterson. Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 3A2, Board Policy 5.604, Overtime Pay. This information is on page 67. Dr. Looney.
Excuse me. Thank you, ma'am, Chair and Board Members. 5.604. This, too, is a first reading. Proposed changes are highlighted in blue. Do recommend your approval upon this first reading.
Would someone like to make a motion? Motion for Mr. Welch.
Second.
Second for Ms. Vogt. Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 3B1, Energy Efficient Grant. This information is located on page 70. Dr. Looney.
Thank you, ma'am, Chair and Board Members. This is a grant that we received of $139,169. I do recommend your approval so that we can put this, these funds to use.
Would someone like to make a motion? Motion for Mr. McLaughlin. Second for Mr. Wimberly. Mr. Welch.
Thank you. We had a great presentation on this from Mr. Samuels at our work session. I just think before we vote on this, we should really address some of those numbers that we, that we talked about, the absolute, you know, the actual savings that we were looking at in kilowatt-hours and I believe it came to literally millions of dollars, if I'm not overstating, that we were saving the taxpayers in energy costs through the years with this. I'm frantically trying to look up real quick what those exact numbers were so I don't misstate it, but if you happen to have them off the top of my head.
Mark, if you could come to the podium, please.
The numbers that I talked about on Thursday night really were the progress that we have made in the last 13, 14 years in reducing our consumption on a per-student basis or per-square-foot basis. And it's due to the Energy Savings Performance Contract primarily that my predecessor and folks before me actually put into place and I was fortunate to kind of walk into the job with. In school year 9900, we were consuming 33 kilowatt-hours per square foot. That's when the Energy Savings Performance Contract that we entered into with Chevron Energy Services went into effect. We invested $5 million of district money, making various changes, equipment changes, lighting changes, and so on and so forth, and have rolled the lessons learned from those things into all the new construction that we've had since then, which includes 15 brand-new schools, about 16,000 additional students enrolled, as well as about 40 to 45 different classroom additions. All those efforts of a number of people have reduced that consumption per square footage down to 12 kilowatt-hours per square foot. And that's almost a two-thirds reduction in consumption. I didn't crank out what that means dollar-wise, although for the first 10 years of that contract, we figure we've saved about $13 million in our utilities budget. It's a pretty good return on investment, 5 million in, 13 million out. And so the EESI grant that you've approved tonight is, or going to approve, I guess, again, is focused on trying to tailor how we address bringing that 12 kilowatt-hours per square foot even lower because our job is getting tougher.
Great work.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 3B2. This is the PTO position. Information is located on page 72. Dr. Looney.
Thank you, ma'am, Chair and Board Members. I do recommend approval of this additional position funded through PTO funds.
Someone like to make a motion?
I would approve.
Motion for Mr. Wimberly.
Second.
Second for Ms. Hammond. Is there any discussion? Ms. Vogt.
Yes. At the work session, I explained that I have decided that I cannot support this, although I recognize this request meets board policy and I have previously supported positions like this. I have come to a crossroads in my own mind as far as how we can continue to do this going forward. I feel strongly in about equity across the county. I believe that the PTOS, there's a lot of blood, sweat, and tears that goes into helping to support our schools. I think my concern and my, the thing that I can't get beyond at this point anymore in my own mind is that the difference between a playground or inanimate objects that are used to enhance any given school do not go to bottom-line resources and impacting education of students. And I believe that our employees are extremely important and they're fundamental and it's a human resource that we're talking about. And our practice is that we take the employee-employer relationship very seriously in Williamson County. Putting this in a situation where we're banking on the PTOS fundraiser to continue to fund, to continue to support that position just doesn't sit well with me anymore. And although I understand that there are people on this board that feel that we might be thwarting the efforts of our PTOS, I would take a different approach and say that although I believe the PTOS, we need the funds that they raise, I believe those funds can be directed and I believe our needs at any of our schools are overwhelming to the point where there is quite a list and there's, there's quite a list of things to choose from for any PTOS to help fund. These requests are coming from principals and if they're a valid request and a resource, then we need to fund it at the budgetary level. So I am making a marked change in this and I understand other people on this board's decision, but I just wanted to clarify why I was taking the vote that I'm going to take. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Peterson.
More or less, just want to as well just let individuals understand why I, as well, can't support this. I agree with the PTO president that ultimately we as a district, if we feel like these positions are important and they're going to affect the education of our students, if we need those positions inside of our schools, then we as a body need to ensure that we get, that we get those funds into the budget. I just feel like money from the PTOS, you know, to me, it seems, it seems like if you were to spend that $5,000 for additional computers, the benefits to the children in the long term are a lot more rather than just, you know, funding one position for that amount. But I just think ultimately the same way. I think that we need to relook at this policy and if we have positions within our schools that need to be funded, we as a body need to ensure that that's the, that we're doing that, not that the PTOS are being responsible for that.
Mr. Wimberly.
Yes, if I may, address both of these comments. First of all, to the point that perhaps we as a district should be funding these positions, I certainly don't take exception to that. I think that we probably should, but we're not doing it currently. And we do have a policy that says that a PTO, and pardon my scratchy voice, that a PTO can fund a classified position. If we as a board feel like this is a bad policy, then we need to take this up through the policy process and make changes if necessary. However, this is a practice that's followed throughout the county. In fact, Dr. Looney, I think I would ask if you could do some research and find out how much money that we're talking about, because if we do decide that we're not going to fund or allow PTOS to fund these types of positions, it would be, my opinion, that we're going to need to increase our budget in order to pay for these positions that we would be eliminating. So, Dr. Looney, if you could put that on your to-do list, it doesn't have to be done now, to let us know what the amount of money is so we can look at increasing our budget. As far as equity is concerned, there is not a parent organization in this county that does not work hard to produce resources for the schools, whether it be financial resources or volunteer resources. I mean, not a county anywhere and, I mean, I'm sorry, not a school anywhere in the county. So to me, for us to punish Perry Creek because they have made the decision in consultation with their principal that this is what they wanted to devote their resources to, where other schools, for example, other parent organizations wish to devote their resources to other things in consultation with their principals, it's just really unfair to Perry Creek. So I would ask that we all support this and make changes if we feel like we need to make changes to the policy, but let's not do it at the expense of the parents and the administration at Perry Creek.
Thank you. Mr. Welch.
Well, I agree with everything Mr. Wimberly said. The only two things I guess I would add to that are, well, first of all, I agree with the points that, many of the points that Ken and Vicki have made. We certainly want to strive towards equity and the reality of, you know, the economic situation is some schools and forth simply have more opportunity and means to fundraise than others. Where I would respectfully disagree, though, is I don't think the means for correcting that inequity or evening out is to limit and penalize those schools that are able. If we are going to apply that reasoning to it, then we should never complain about the BEP funding formula ever again. And that's something that we do complain about considerably, which is a valid complaint and I think we should continue. But what's good for the goose is good for the gander. More importantly, I worry about the chilling effect that this would have if we start telling PTOS, you know, we want your support, we need your support, but we're going to dictate, you know, to you what it can be, not allow you and the local building principal to make these best decisions and what is the best decision for your community. You know, here today, for example, we have an invitation from Centennial High School to attend their holiday show this Saturday, 9 to 5, and this Sunday from noon to 4. Get your great gifts there at the holiday show this weekend. What if we have another school that decides, well, that group has more capabilities, more funds, or so forth, and, you know, then kind of wants to limit what they're doing there? As I said, it's just, I see it as a very slippery slope. It's kind of a dangerous path we want to go down when we start making judgment calls for these organizations about what they should and should not spend the money that they've earned when they are spending it for our schools. So while I acknowledge your point, I just think that there's better means to accomplish that goal than trying to limit our supporting organizations.
Ms. Mills.
Well, I think everybody here probably knows where I am on this. I've voted against this for 12 years, so I'm not going to change at this point. But I do want to say a couple of things. We do have a board policy that addresses that, but it's at this board's discretion in our board policy. So that's something, you know, the board policy doesn't say we have to do it. The board policy says it's at the board's discretion. So I want to say that and I want to say that, you know, I want to praise our PTOS for doing the fundraising work they do. I mean, I've been a PTO president. I know what that's like and a lot of work goes into it. And I'm proud that our families and our communities want to, want to be involved in what we do and how we do it. But when it comes to personnel, I feel like philosophically that that is a district responsibility. It's not that I think we should tell PTOS how to spend their money. It's just a philosophical belief that I have about what our responsibility is as a district to fund and what I think our PTOS are. So of course, I'm not going to be able to support this.
Thank you. Ms. Hammond.
I obviously agree with a lot of the things that have been said on both sides, but I will say, just for a point for clarification, the PTOS, and obviously I'm very familiar with them and the great work that they're doing, and we have PTOS, PTOSs, and a PTA here in Williamson County. As school support organizations, they are coming alongside and they are working hand-in-hand and in tandem with their principals. They are not making, they're not raising funds and just making decisions on their own of how they should spend the funds. They're not working in a vacuum. They're working with their principals, hand-in-hand to best meet the needs of their schools. And again, as I know this board completely embraces them, I do too, and I really appreciate the work that they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Peterson.
I just wanted to add one last comment. I just, again, me being a PTO president, former PTO president, I know how hard they work and I know what it means to try to do your very best at raising money and certainly I don't think that we should have any say in what a PTO purchases, but I would say, I guess the reason why I have probably such a hard time with this is because I don't know where does the volunteer start in a paid position? Like where does that fine line meet? I mean, I understand her, the, her point, too, that, you know, they wanted a professional or someone that knew, you know, new technology. But to me, like I said, I just, I feel like, you know, those positions can still be found. Parents are able to do that. Like I said, I just think that it's important that, you know, I do think that this policy should be looked at, so I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to the motion before we vote? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 8 yes, 3 no.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is 3B3 on page 73, Special Education Additional Expenses. Dr. Looney.
Thank you, ma'am, Chair and Board Members. As we reported to you in the work session, we've had a significant increase and continue to have a significant increase in the number of special education students, particularly those students that represent high costs to the district. There's a need for some additional funds and I'm recommending approval of this resolution to take care of that. This is high-cost money that we receive from the state.
Someone like to make a motion?
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Hullett.
Second.
Second for Ms. Hammond. Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 3B4, Enter Category Budget Adjustments for Principal Salaries. This information is on page 74. Dr. Looney.
Thank you, ma'am, Chair and Board Members. This resolution is self-explanatory. I recommend approval.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion for Mr. Wimberly.
Second.
Second for Mr. Hullett. Mr. Welch. Is there anyone that wishes to speak before we vote? Is there anyone that wishes to speak before we vote? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the Adoption and Approval of the 2013-14 Board Goals. This information is on page 75. And what is on our screen, and the first board goal reflects the discussion that we had at the work session on Thursday evening. Would someone like to make a motion?
Move to her.
Motion for Ms. Vogt.
Second.
Second for Ms. Hammond. Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is Item 3E, the Evaluation of the 2012-13 School Board Goals. This information is on page 77. And behind this document is the Williamson County Board of Education Member Handbook that we discussed, and the electronic copy has been changed to reflect the things that we discussed on Thursday evening, to include the added language on page 81 reflecting board member training, the removal of "second" under the annual organizational meeting on page 81, the removal of the S following "ex officio" on page 81, the S on members. Also, the added language of "by November" for the five-year capital plan on page 88, and the lowercase and uppercase Cs that were reflected in the word "county" throughout the document have been corrected. Would someone like to make a motion to accept the evaluation of our 2012-13 School Board Goals?
So, move.
Motion for Mr. Hullett. Second for Mr. Peterson. Is there any discussion? Ms. Mills?
I have two questions. Excuse me. We said that the board will create a board member handbook by June 2013. We did not do that.
Correct.
It also says, that's the only one, really, I have an argument with, because the other one we have did not meet. We met the goal, and we're voting on a handbook right now, but I have a problem voting for this when it says that we met a goal by a certain date and we did not. So, I guess I'm going to have to vote against this because I don't think we're voting on accurate information.
Are you wishing to make a motion to amend?
Can we amend what the goal was? Sure. If we want to go back and retrofit the goal, which is, I think that's what we're doing, I make a motion that says the board will create a school board member handbook by November 2013. Is that what you're saying? Because I don't think we met the goal, and so, to me, it needs to have, I mean, in my mind, because we're just now voting on it at this meeting, we didn't meet the goal. So, we either changed that we did not meet the goal, or we changed what the goal was, or I just need to vote no on the goals. So, Mr. Gold.
Well, you've given yourself those choices, and you can make a motion to amend either the goal itself or the answer to the goal. You know, as a practical matter, you know, that's one of my favorite phrases.
I know.
As a practical matter, my opinion, this is not a legal opinion, but my opinion is, given what you've said, it sounds like you're more saying that you would prefer that it be changed to "did not meet goal" rather than change the goal itself.
Right. I would, because I don't think we did meet it by that deadline. I think we, you know, I think we met the goal, well, I think we're meeting the goal right now, but, you know, when you establish a goal and you establish a time that you met it by, you either met it or you didn't meet it by that deadline, that was what the goal was. So, I feel like we, you know, probably, it doesn't look like we did a good job on our goals because we didn't meet two of them, and I'm just going to be honest and say that. We're not quite as good as Mike is in meeting his goals. I think we didn't meet our goal as a board, and I think, you know, for us to change that is probably not what we need to do. I think we need to just take the hit and say we didn't get it done and, you know, acknowledge that.
I'd like to make a comment if I could. This is, in some respects, a report card of how the board functions. I will say that, from my perspective, the goal was to have a handbook, and I agree, it wasn't done in as timely a fashion as possible, but I don't know that when we had the discussion, the date was nearly as important as you having the handbook. I think the reality of it is, if you think about the timing of it, the function of the handbook isn't going to be for the next election cycle, and so, I think, you know, if we, hindsight being 2020, I might have advised you to be a little bit more liberal in your timeline to start with, but that's just my perspective. I think the important thing is you accomplished the goal, I think it's a good document and will guide the principles of the board's work moving forward. So, I would encourage you to do the same thing I encourage our teachers to do, and that is to focus on, did you master the standard? And in this case, I think you mastered that standard, even if you needed some remediation.
Second to the motion.
Should I change it to "did not meet"?
To change it to "did not meet." Mr. Wimberly, did you wish to speak to the motion that's on the floor?
I wish to speak, and I think I'm speaking to the motion. What I would suggest we do is, and whether we put it under "met goal" or "did not meet goal," I don't know that it really matters a lot to me, but perhaps, under the check mark, it's more than a check mark, and it just notes that the goal, if we say "met goal," the goal was met in November of 2013. And if it says "did not meet goal," then we would indicate the goal was met in November of 2013. So, just a little annotation, because I think Janice is right, I mean, we didn't meet it, but, and I think I would have difficulty voting in favor of it since we didn't meet it, but I wouldn't have any problem if there was a little annotation on it. So, I'm not sure I addressed the motion.
I could change my amendment to say that we did not meet the goal by June the 13th, but we met it by November 13th, and have that annotated by, under "did not meet goal."
I'd second that motion.
Well, we have a second by Mr. Mesra, so I need to go back to this.
Mr. Mesra. I second that.
There you go. So, Mr., we have a motion and a second to make an annotation that we did not meet the goal by June 13th, but we did meet the goal by November of 2013. Correct?
Right.
Ms. Vogt?
I requested to speak because I was suddenly recognizing Ms. Mills' point and understanding that I, too, was going to have difficulty, because honestly, if this were a superintendent's goal sheet, I would take a hard stance and say "did not meet the goal," and...
Well, that's what I'm worried about.
And so, I'm willing to thread the needle, so to speak, and find some balance in this and recognize that, in fact, the handbook now exists, and that is the important thing in all of this. However, I would not be comfortable, I'm pleased that Mr. Wimberly came up with a plausible solution to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hammond?
I agree, and I'm glad that we've cleared that up, and I did want to say, though, that I, not having been here when you all set this goal last year, but been a part of its completion, really appreciate this document. I think it was, it's been a very good job, a really good first step, and I'm glad that we have that going forward.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion before we vote? Ms. Vogt?
Would you restate exactly what we're voting on?
We have a motion to amend the Williamson County 2012-13 School Board Goals to reflect an annotation that the board member handbook was not completed by June 13, but was completed by November 2013.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Are we ready to vote? Motion passes. So, now we're back to the main motion, which is to approve the evaluation of our 2012-13 School Board Goals. Is there any further discussion?
As amended.
As amended. Mr. McLaughlin?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 3F, it's the 2014-15 School Calendar. This information is on page 105.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board Members. I just want to make sure that your version of the calendar has the correct date in November. It's November 11th, which is Veterans Day, is listed. I know that the original calendar had a mistake on that. I do recommend approval of the proposed calendar as outlined on page 105.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion for Mr. Wimberly?
Second.
Second for Ms. Vogt. Ms. Vogt?
I didn't have anything.
Y'all pardon me, because I'm getting weird signals up here.
I think I inadvertently pressed the button.
Okay, okay. Mr. Mesra?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I couldn't help but notice that the spring holiday falls on Good Friday, and that this was also the case last year. Therefore, in an effort to eschew obfuscation, I would like to make the motion to amend the calendar to read "Good Friday" for the April 3 definition.
We have a motion on the floor. We have a second from Mr. Welch. So, we have a motion on the floor, and a second motion for Mr. Mesra, and a second for Mr. Welch to designate the spring holiday, which is on the calendar, is April 3, to reflect the word "Good Friday." Are we ready to vote? This is on the amendment. Mr. Hullett, did you have a question?
I did have a question, I'm sorry. Just real quick, I pushed the button right before you hit it.
Okay.
So, would it say "spring holiday" and then also say "Good Friday" beside it, or would it only say "Good Friday"?
It's not his motion. His motion says "Good Friday."
His motion is to remove the word "spring holiday" and have that word replaced with "Good Friday." So, the first vote at this point is we're voting on the motion that's on the floor.
Your vote is 6 yes, 5 no.
Motion fails. We're back to the main motion, which is the approval of the 2014-15 School Calendar. Is there any further discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is Item 3G, these are the rezoning recommendations for 2014-15. This information is on page 107. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board Members. I appreciate your consideration of this matter. Everybody has given considerable time and effort, and the community has responded, as you have indicated, in a very understandable and passionate but respectful way. The staff's recommendation on item number one is going to be to reduce the geographic area of Spring Station Zone from its existing northwest boundaries to west of I-65 and north of Buckner Road, rezoning that area from Spring Station Middle School to Heritage Middle School, and from Summit High School to Independence High School. Students in this area would continue to be zoned for Bethesda Elementary School. Prior to you deciding that, I would like to give you, I'd like to make public notice of my intent to recommend Summit High School for open zoning for the 14-15 school year, which you'll take up at a later date when we traditionally handle open-zone schools.
Someone like to make a motion? These zonings will be, recommendations will be, we'll vote on them separately. So, the first one is for the Spring Station. Someone like to make a motion? Motion for Ms. Mills? Second for Mr. Peterson? Mr. Welch?
No, ma'am. I didn't press my button.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Dr. Looney, in regards to, I noticed that you're saying the special zoning, and I know we normally do that at a certain time of open zoning, but I do know that because of the zoning of the middle school, it affects the high school, and the parents that are going to have to make decisions for their children, it affects not only the middle school, but the high school. I would like to make an amendment to change that, but before, I'd like to hear from you in regards to, why is it, why can we not do it together and have this open zoning for Summit High School and be a part of this? I want to kind of get your logic on it.
Let me interrupt a minute. You had mentioned two things, one, making a motion to amend, and second, to ask Dr. Looney a question. If you want to start with a motion to amend, it requires a second. If you want an explanation from Dr. Looney first, then you can wait on that.
I want an explanation first.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your question. I understand the issue. The board has, on its annual calendar, the time period for when open zoning is addressed. In addition, there is a deadline for parents to apply for open zoning, which comes after the establishment of the open zone. You will hear in my next recommendation that I intend to do a very similar thing for the second rezoning that you're con- second rezoning that you're considering. I don't feel like I can establish a number that I feel comfortable with in November. We need some more times to look, we need some more time, excuse me, to look at new enrollment at the beginning of second semester before we can make a real informed decision about how many seats we think we can handle in all of the recommended open zone schools. And I failed to mention that, in addition to recommending Summit be open zoned, I intend to make a recommendation for Page Middle and Page High to be open zoned as well, and we would rather make sure that the number is a good number to deal with, rather than for you to vote on a number now and then come back, open more seats up at a later time. So I think it would give the board, more importantly, it would give the staff ample time to, to dig into the, to the numbers a little bit more after the second semester enrollment comes in.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Mills?
That was one of the questions that I wanted to ask, is make sure that you, we had talked about open zoning, Page Middle, and we also had a request from a parent to consider open zoning Heritage Middle, and I didn't know if you were going to put that on the table as well.
Yes, ma'am. I'll tell you, I actually am fond of that idea. Once again, I want to make sure that we look at all the numbers, and, you know, we've had so many of those kinds of requests coming in the last week or two, that we want to make sure that we consider all the unintended consequences as well, but I, on the surface, it sounds like a good idea.
Right, okay. And the other thing that I wanted to just say, you and I have had lots of lengthy conversation about this zoning, and we have a little bit of a philosophical difference about, about it, but I'm going to support what you're asking us to do with the thought that you believe this is the best thing for this area, and it's the longest-term solution for this area.
Yes, ma'am. I feel very confident in saying that we will not be moving more families than necessary and thereby creating another rezoning where families have to be, be sent back to the school we just zoned them out. I feel very comfortable in saying that.
And that we're taking enough from Spring Station.
And Williamson County, and Williamson County enough is never enough.
Which I know is a concern of mine, but...
Based on our projections, yes, ma'am, I think we're taking enough in the midterm.
Ms. Vogt?
Dr. Looney, I really appreciate the time and effort of the staff and how many hours they've poured into looking at this. I think both of the rezonings have been truly carefully analyzed from every different perspective. I think it has been asked by many of the board members to, to have a, another look at it, and I, I believe that the, the proposals are the very best proposals, and, but that does not negate the very personal experience of all the people that are going to be affected. And I, I take it very, I understand from all the emails, it's, it's very personal when it's happening to you. It, I understand it's difficult for the people to accept it, but I, in this situation, from the board member's perspective, we do have to look at what overcrowded conditions do to, to schools. They erode educational opportunities for all the students. It, it hurts the school overall, and if we have an opportunity to, to alleviate overcrowding, I, I think it's incumbent upon us to do that for the benefit of the health of the school and to alleviate any stresses that are involved. I think we have to remain laser-focused on our primary objective, and that's delivering educational, the highest quality instruction possible and educational opportunities to all of the students. I think Williamson County is going to continue to attract families. I think we're going to continue to have development for the foreseeable future, and I think rezonings are truly going to continue in, in our part of the county. The development in Spring Hill and Nolansville and Brentwood right now, it's exploding. I think we're going to have continued pressures, and although I understand and I empathize with every one of the stories that I have read, because it is all incredibly personal for these families, I can't help but look at the overall primary objective of our school system, and that's to maintain the highest quality education possible for all students. So I, I appreciate everything that's been done, and I believe that your staff has, has worked very hard on this, and I've asked a lot of questions personally about it as well. So I just, I wanted to point that out and make sure that people are aware of how, how seriously this is all taken under, the consideration that is given. And, and I do appreciate the many emails that I received that were, were truly professional in tone, and, and I just, I'm so grateful for the parents that we have in Williamson County. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hammond?
Dr. Looney, just wanted to go back to the potential timeframe, and you might know when that open zoning may happen. On our annual agenda, that shows up in March. Would you expect that that would be the timeframe?
No, ma'am. I think we'll bring it to you before March.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak before we vote? We have a motion on the floor to accept the staff recommendation for the rezoning for Spring Station's zone. Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the second portion of this rezoning recommendation for 2014-15. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board Members. Not dissimilar to the item that we just previously discussed, I'd like to read to you the proposed rezoning area. We're proposing to reduce the geographic area of Lipscomb Elementary School Zone from its existing southwest boundary to north of Moore's Lane and Linwood Way, rezoning that area from Lipscomb Elementary to Walnut Grove Elementary School. Students in that area would continue to be rezoned, rezoned to Brentwood Middle and Brentwood High until 2016, when the northwest area high school is projected to open. We recommend at this time that the board rezone this area to Grassland Middle and Franklin High School effective fall of 2016. In addition, not included in this proposal, I'm going to be recommending to you that we, I'm sorry, let me read this again. Although not included in this rezoning, I intend to recommend at the appropriate time next semester that students in this area be given the option to attend Grassland Middle School as an out-of-zone year for the 2014-15 school year. And then, not listed here, as I've communicated to you, I do plan on making a recommendation for Crockett to have some limited open zoning next school year.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion for Mr. Peterson?
Second.
Second for Mr. Mesra. Mr. Hullett?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. For the past month or so, a little over a month, we've talked about community a lot, and in the rezoning picture, what I've looked at is, I call it the horseshoe, because it's the two sides of it, and the right side of the horseshoe that's in the proposal is the Brentwood Point community, which has been part of the Brentwood community for decades. And I'll just tell you, I can't support this as it is, because I've asked for explanation of why keeping those, that part of our community in the community schools, sending them to Crockett, to Woodland, and to Ravenwood, especially with the Northeast High School opening up, which should alleviate some of that pressure, and then backfilling Ravenwood with those folks in that community, why that can't work. I haven't, I haven't heard concrete evidence of why we can't keep a Brentwood community within the Brentwood community schools, so I can't support this as it is.
Thank you. Mr. Welch?
Well, to your point, but sort of from an opposite direction, well, let me start off by saying, Dr. Looney, I really appreciate the job that you and the staff have done. There's obviously a very real and timely need to alleviate an extremely overcrowded school. I think you've obviously considered a lot of the alternatives, put the thought in, listened to the community, you know, taken the time to explain your decision, so want to start off by commending you for that. I, I have sort of a similar feeling, but from an opposite point of view, in that the, the area, kind of the Franklin community that I represent, I think over the years we've seen a lot of these neighborhoods that have been moved out of that area for the need to, to make room for overcrowded schools. Now it seems like we're backfilling them with, with some additional neighborhoods from the north, and while I understand the need, I, I just can't get beyond that particular point of it. So on this one, I am also going to have to vote no on it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Ms. Hammond?
Dr. Looney, just as I asked on the last one, I just want to ask again about the potential open zoning. You would expect, again, that that would come forth potentially earlier than our annual agenda in March?
Yes, ma'am. I fully intend to bring you open zoning before that. I would just like, as a footnote, we have been looking at the capacity numbers at Crockett as, and we've had some pretty robust discussions about it. The one item that I have failed to fully articulate to you is that there are four, four preschool programs, I'm sorry, Denise, EC, four EC programs at Crockett, and so in our conversations about, yes, they have capacity, but much of that capacity is actually taken by preschool students in the school. So there's not as much capacity in practical terms as there seems to be on paper. Now, it's a true statement that we can certainly move some of the EC or preschool programs, and that's something that we'll look at, but until we have good, hard numbers that we can work with, I would, I would feel uncomfortable making a recommendation for open zoning a specific number of families until we get that nailed down.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak before we vote? I'd like to take an opportunity at this time, since this area is an area that I represent, to address the community. As you've heard me state many, many times before, we are truly blessed to live in a community that values and supports public education in all 41 of our outstanding schools. The success of our public schools in Williamson County is the reason for the growth and the economic success of our county. In the past 12 years, we have opened 11 new schools and increased our enrollment by 14,000 students. And as Dr. Looney would say, pause and think about that for just a moment, because that's quite phenomenal, and I don't know of anywhere else in the state that's experiencing that type of growth. With all that being said, we have managed to maintain the high quality of education in every one of our schools that our community has come to expect. The decision for zoning new schools and for rezoning for existing schools is never easy. The people that I'm honored to serve with around this board have, are all parents. Many of us have experienced rezoning firsthand, and we know the emotion that is attached to that, and the thoughts that, that come when we make these decisions do not come I also know that the students that are affected in this rezoning will continue to be successful and thrive in their new schools because of our wonderful parents and our incredible staffs. The plan before us tonight provides for stability for these students in these areas for as long as this board can project, and it follows logical geographical lines and contiguous transportation zone lines, and I would encourage the board to support this plan. Thank you for having, allowing me the opportunity to speak. Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 10 yes, 1 no.
Motion passes. That concludes the business that is before this body this evening.
Not, not about this, just before we adjourn.
But you, Mr. McLaughlin, you have something you wish to say?
I do.
Go ahead.
Okay. Am I live?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You know, I think, I feel very strongly that, you know, we have a lot of a difference of opinions, and when we feel strongly about something, then we speak about those things. But also, when we speak about things or do things that affect anything that reflects back on our board, then I think it's important to state that as well. And the reason, and I think it's extremely important to state the fact that the reason that we did not meet one of our goals is because I did not finish a course. That's a reflection on the entire board, and I just want to state openly and apologize to each board member that I've done that. Thank you.
Before we adjourn, I would be remiss if I didn't ask our principals and staff that are in the audience to please stand and let us recognize you, and thank you for being here this evening. Thank you very much for taking time out of your already very busy days to be here. We appreciate your support. Board members, if you've noticed, we do not have members, December meetings scheduled at this time on our scheduled meetings, so this may be the last time that we see each other before the first of the year. So as we begin this season of Thanksgiving and celebrations, I wish each of you a very safe and happy holiday season, and with that being said, this meeting is adjourned. Excuse me, Mr. Welch, did you have something to say?
Well, I was inspired by, by Tim's admission, and so I have to make an admission. I, apparently I need some remedial keypad training. I, I did miss vote on the last item. Not that it changes the outcome any, but would like to have the record show that I did vote no, or intended to vote no, I'm sorry.
Okay, so on the last vote that the board took, you would like the record to reflect that you voted no, so that would make it nine yes?
Yes, ma'am. Nine to no.
To no. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
While we're confessing.
Thank you all for being here this evening. This meeting is adjourned.